I'll go ahead and call to order the September 23rd meeting of the St. Joseph County Council. This is a committee meeting, so we will begin with Human Resources or Human Services Criminal Justice Committee Chairperson Diana Hess.
Mr. President, Bill Number 7925A appropriation $149,000, $133 of the shares in the firm.
Good afternoon, Steve Noonan, Executive Officer for the St. Joe County Police Department, Offices 401 West Sample. This represents reimbursement for overtime. The first amount, $1,2,560, is from the Amazon Community Enhancement Fund. This was used for patrols out in the IEEC area, particularly along State Road Two in that corridor. The second amount is revenue received from the federal government reimbursing overtime for our officers in the US Marshals, DEA, and FBI Task Forces.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Are there any questions?
Steve, how much do you have left?
Well, we have approximately 16,000 of the original left, and then the, there was another 80,000 put forth, I believe by the, at the last meeting.
So that lasted, that money from Amazon lasted you how long, about a year?
A little less than a year. I think we began it in March, so approximately eight months, or it'll be a little over eight months by the time it's expended.
And so you have like 16,000 left and another 80 coming?
Yes.
To, for that continued enforcement out there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to send favorably.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moves with the full council with a favorable recommendation? Thank you. Next, I have Bill Number 7925B, a transfer of $218,530.88 from Ducom Center.
Good evening, Julie Lawson, St. Joseph County Community Corrections, 401-61 Lathrop Street in South Bend. We are seeking approval to move funds within our grant account to, into fund line items that we can pay other necessary items like food, utilities, laundry, and some maintenance supplies. So we're just seeking no money but just approval to move them from certain funds to others so we can pay bills.
Are there any questions for Julie? Hearing, seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to send favorably.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moves forward to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Next, I have a salary amendment, Bill Number 8025, from the Prosecutor's Office, combined with 7925 appropriation, $171,286. Mr. Eisenhofer.
Yes, Bob Eisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're here tonight to ask for a salary amendment and an appropriation to fund the new stop grant that we just received, $171,286. This is to fund the Special Victims Unit. It's a continuation fund by the continuation grant, and it requires a 25% match, which we've included in the 2025 Prosecutor's Budget.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Eisenhofer? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to send favorably.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The full council with a favorable recommendation?
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I have Bill Number 7725, a code book change fees and fines for the Health Department.
Hi, yes, this is Amy Rupey, Director of Finance for the Department of Health, offices on the 8th and 9th floor of the building, and we are requesting support to increase some of the fees that we currently have on our fee schedule, as well as establish new fees that are either department-wide or specific to individual units. I do believe you have in your packet a color-coded copy that shows what the current fee is for those said items, if it is an existing fee, and our requested proposal for those. For the fees that we currently are charging for, we went back and looked at the last time they were increased. Most of them have been five-plus years for those. That's why we chose those as the ones to have an increase in them. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Rupey? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Motion to send favorably.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hess. We move on to Land Use Planning Committee. Mr. Katanzeri?
President Tetchel, we have Bill Number 7625, RWD Campus Development, a request to go from PUD to PUD. Area plan?
Yes, this is Sean Klein, Area Plan Director, with offices on the 11th floor of this building. So this petition concerns the Legacy Village Town Homes. It's a off-campus student housing complex consisting of 14 townhomes. They would like to make a modification to the final site plan, which procedurally just plays out as any other rezoning, which is why it says PUD to PUD. The only changes to the final site plan that are being proposed is to go from two stories to three stories. The reason for this is although these were fully permitted through the proper process in 2009 and 2010, the approved site plan we have on file suggests that the maximum height would be two stories. They were constructed at three, so this is just to correct for that and make the site plan consistent with what's actually been constructed on the ground. They're not proposing any additional construction whatsoever. The other change that they are proposing, currently each townhome is limited to six unrelated individuals. They would like to increase that to eight. However, they're capping the total occupancy of the development to 98 individuals. So, all things considered, this is just an increase in 14 additional residents amongst these townhomes.
Any questions for area plan staff?
Yeah, question.
Mr. Rutten.
So Sean, it's already zoned PUD, so this is basically amending the existing zoning, so it's an amended PUD?
That's correct.
Is that just a simple way to say it?
Exactly, yes, you're correct.
Okay, and they're not building any new housing, they're just asking for a bit more capacity in existing housing, and this is near Notre Dame?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein?
Mr. Katanzeri.
Yep, Ms. Drake.
How many total townhouses did you say there were?
There are 14.
And you said each one currently has how many residents of?
Each one currently has six residents. In the future, they want some of them to have eight, but not all of them. The total residency will only be 98.
What's the bedroom, how many bedrooms?
I believe that there are six per unit currently.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Six bedrooms?
Six bedrooms.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein before we hear from the petitioner? Thank you, Mr. Klein. We'll move on to the petitioner for Bill 7625. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Matt Schram from Creek de Volte. We are at 4101 Edison Lakes Parkway, Suite 100, over in Mishawaka. I represent the petitioner. Just a little bit of background to start, the Legacy Village PUD was previously approved over two phases. One was the initial 10 homes on one parcel, which is approved in 2009 with a future development of professional office park. That was then changed for the Phase Two approval in 2010 to just be an additional four homes. So we've got a total of 14 homes. The existing restrictions that are relevant here are a maximum of six unrelated persons, as Mr. Klein said, per home. Depending on where you look in the existing language, it's either two stories or two and a half, and then there's a maximum height of 44 feet for each home. And this is student housing, just a few blocks from Notre Dame. It's close to the intersection of Douglas and Ironwood. And really, these are, it's just a community of 14 upscale homes for student housing. They're designed for, really for parents to feel comfortable that their kids are living somewhere that's safe, secure, that has attentive and involved ownership. Each house is fully furnished. They've got six bedrooms each, four of the bedrooms on the second floor with two shared bathrooms there, and then the third floor has two larger bedrooms with an additional full bathroom. And then the first floor is all kind of community living space, a kitchen, laundry room, dining room, private patio. Each home has a fire suppression system, it's got a monitored security system. You know, owners have kind of taken great pains to make sure that this is a, kind of stands out from the other student housing as a quality, quality safe, well-maintained property. And again, the ownership's very involved. Last year, they installed cameras throughout the parking areas to kind of cut down and help prevent some of those large gatherings that can escalate into an issue. They've been working hand-in-hand with the university to try to identify, get out in front of, and defuse some of these large gatherings. They've met with the St. Joe County Police, trying to draft a plan, you know, if things get out of control, how do we disperse these, you know, and coordinate with the police. First couple of weeks of each school year, they go through a robust orientation program with all the students, where they're setting basic expectations, clarifying policies, you know, talking about certain prohibited events like the, you know, the running of the gingers or ginger run, you know, and other large open gatherings. And then they just maintain frequent tenant communications throughout the school year. They've got a pretty strong relationship with some of the neighbors. Initially, when this was approved, the Catholic Church directly to the south, the Little Flower Catholic Church, was one of the leaders in opposing the project. They have since developed a great relationship. The church even wrote a letter in support. A lot of the residents will attend services and other functions there at the church. The church will in turn use the parking lot for overflow parking when the students aren't around. And then, you know, another neighbor immediately to the northeast, the McGowan Insurance Group, also provided a letter of support, and both of those are in your little packet there. Specifically for the petition, as you heard, this, really we're wanting to just amend the previous PUD in just two ways. One is to increase the number of residents permitted in a single townhome to be eight instead of six, which is easily accomplished by those two larger bedrooms on the third floor, just making those double occupancy. But we'd only want to do this up to a maximum of 98 total residents for the community. We don't even expect to meet that level. Many of the students tend to like the structure with six residents per home, everybody has their own bedroom, but there are some that are looking for a little bit more affordability and the ability to kind of spread those costs out among the extra two roommates. We're also looking to amend the number of stories allowed to be three, which would match the original construction. We're not looking to do any material changes, either interior or exterior, just trying to kind of clean up the originally approved site plan to match how it was originally drawn up and constructed. Again, I mean, this is quality student housing. It's designed for, you know, parents to just really be at peace about where their students are living as much as they can with having college-age students. Ownership's very involved and attentive. These changes are going to have a pretty minimal impact on the surrounding community. We're talking about a maximum of an additional 14 residents, and again, we don't even expect that. We would just kind of anticipate three to four homes that would have an increased number of residents in them. Two large bedrooms in each home that, as I mentioned, can easily become, you know, two-person bedrooms and probably still be bigger than the dorm room that I had when I was in college. Zero interior/exterior physical changes to the homes. And parking-wise, we've got 110 spots currently. When we're maxed out at 84 residents, we're seeing historically 90 to 95% of the students would actually have a vehicle and be issued a parking decal. We would expect that to continue, so even if we hit that max of 98, you know, we're looking at an extra 20 to 25 open spots at any given time. So with that, we would ask for your favorable recommendation, and I am happy to answer any questions for you. One of the owners is here along with the broker, if you have any additional questions that I am not able to answer.
Anybody have a question for Mr. Schram?
I've got a question.
Sure, Ms. Drake, Mrs. Drake.
So, these are owned or rented? I mean, are they?
So, the RWD, the petitioner owns all 14 homes and then rents them out to the students.
What's the average cost of the rental?
The, for the full six students, it's about $9,000 a month per unit.
Any other questions for Mr. Schram?
Yeah, questions.
Mr. Rutten.
Can you address the fire protection that is designed in for that site currently?
As far as specifically what's in there?
The interior, exterior, if the density's going to go up, I think that could be one of the concerns. Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Sure, I mean, I guess I don't have all the details. I know it's a sprinkler system inside. I know we have been in contact with the Fire Marshal, Mr. Melsing, he is good with the existing infrastructure. We are looking at getting the Fire Department a master code so they can easily access all the buildings. Am I missing anything, Bob?
No, you're spot on.
Looks like the, you know, fire truck could roll in there pretty easily. I assume there's at least one fire hydrant within that area?
There are three fire hydrants.
Three, okay. Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Tanner, did you have a question?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Anybody else have a question for the petitioner, Mr. Schram? Hearing no other questions, I do remember when we did rezon this, and it was a little contentious with Little Flower Church, but there were a lot of promises made by the owners then about security and fire protection, and I've never heard a complaint since, so I'm guessing you guys have kept your end of the bargain up. In fact, to get a letter of support from the church, that's pretty impressive. I would attend motion on Bill 7625. Move to send favorably.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to send it to the full council favorably. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Bill 7625 goes to the council favorably, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bill Number 4225, rezoning on Spruce Road and Walnut Road and Chicago Trail, the Sikorsky Mallow Manor LLC. Bill Number 4225, area plan.
Yes, Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Director, offices on the 11th floor. So this is a petition to rezone a little over 1,000 acres from Agricultural District to I Industrial District. The property is located on the south side of Spruce Road, or rather, Chicago Trail, between Timothy and Spruce Road, in the area outlined on your screen. It's shown there. Currently, the property is made up of several parcels. Much of it contains large agricultural fields. There are also at least two single-family homes within the rezoning site. Additionally, there appear to be 16 single-family homes directly abutting the rezoning area, all zoned A Agricultural District, looking north of Chicago Trail, mostly larger parcels that are farmed, also some smaller parcels with residential uses, zoned R Single Family, or A Agricultural, rather. Additionally, to the north is the Hamilton Grove Senior Living Facility, that is zoned R and R2. To the east are large farmed parcels and the Honeysuckle Solar Energy Facility, zoned A Agricultural. To the south are large farmed parcels and another solar energy facility, as well as smaller parcels with residential uses, most of those fronting on US 20. And then, the southern boundary of the rezoning area is located a little over a third from the town limits of New Carlyle, and then looking to the west are large farmed parcels that are zoned A Agricultural District. This is a portion of the current site, Site 1 viewed from Spruce Road. This is Chicago Trail in its intersection with Spruce Road at the east end of the rezoning area. Again, from Chicago Trail, Walnut Road. These are homes on the east side of Walnut Road. The original site plan provided really just shows the rezoning area. I believe the petitioner is going to provide some more detailed site plans during their In terms of the current streets, Chicago Trail, Timothy Road, Walnut Road, and Spruce Road are two-lane county roads currently. And if the rezoning were approved for the data center, it would likely require municipal water and sewer service extensions. Come back to these. Turning to the state law criteria, the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with recommendation FP1A of the comprehensive plan, that being to preserve highly productive agricultural areas identified on the future land use plan. The majority of the soil present on this property would be considered USDA prime farmland. However, it would advance recommendation ED3A, which is to encourage opportunities for business expansion and attraction that focus on job creation and tax-based growth. Looking at the land use plan specifically, the area is targeted for continued intensive agricultural use. However, if you look at the extreme southern portion of the rezoning area, it does fall within the area that is targeted for economic development in the Economic Development Priority Area 1, which is titled New Carlyle. Additionally, although this is entirely within the unincorporated St. Joseph County, the town of New Carlyle in their comprehensive plan, do consider this area to be proper for agroheritage tourism along Timothy Road and Chicago Trail, and then the majority of the site, when you get away from these roads, they propose rural management character for those areas. Looking at the current conditions and character, given the size of the parcels currently, it suggests that there is ongoing agricultural viability for these properties. In terms of the most desirable use, as it stands now, ongoing agriculture would be the most desirable use. However, given the proper infrastructure, both street infrastructure and utility extensions, this could be a prime location for light industrial use, including that of data centers. Looking to conservation of property values, it's unlikely that the data center use would have any deleterious impact on continued agricultural production. However, there is the potential that it could adversely impact the value of residential uses in this vicinity. However, this impact could be mitigated by substantial setbacks and landscape screening, especially given the vast size of the rezoning area, which should allow for considerable buffering should the rezoning be approved. Finally, turning to responsible development and growth, it is possible that the site could be developed responsibly for data center use if all of the roadway improvements and the utility improvements come onboard to support that use. If the rezoning is approved, staff recommends that it be held to the written commitments that were, that we subjected the Microsoft site to, as well as other data centers in the region, that being prohibition of a list of heavier industrial uses, as well as the requirement of a traffic impact study per the county engineer's requirements. This comes to you with an unfavorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission by a vote of seven to zero. At the public hearing, three spoke in favor, three spoke in remonstrance. Prior to the APC public hearing, we did receive 144 written statements in total. One of those was in favor, 143 were in remonstrance. The charts on the screen kind of show you the breakdown in those remonstrance, primarily emails. 60 of them came from unincorporated St. Joseph County, 44 came from the town of New Carlyle. Of those, from the entirety of the county, counting the incorporated areas, 82 of them came from all of township. Second to that would be Portage with 18. Again, this did come with an unfavorable recommendation, seven to zero. Happy to try to answer any questions from there.
Anybody have questions for Sean on this bill?
Mr. Katanzeri.
Mrs. Drake.
First of all, thank you for that chart, that's helpful.
Of course.
To see that. Second of all, what did you, can you just, I didn't catch it all, but what did you say our comp plan says again about that area? Not New Carlyles, but our, the county?
Ours, yeah. So, in the future land use map, it shows it as intensive agriculture. There is another map with economic development priority areas. The southernmost portion of the site would fall within that, but primarily it is in the intensive agricultural area.
So, it sounds like of that list, what is the list called of the five, the five points that you go through? I don't know if it has a name, but it sounds like it might not meet any of the five, depending on how it's interpreted.
That's possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein? Mr. Klein, we understand, and I'm getting reports back from people that attended the public hearing, there were a lot of questions raised by people in remonstrance. Were those adequately answered? Do you know?
To some degree, there were concerns related to, you know, water usage, of course, always comes up. To the extent that that can be answered at this point, I believe the petitioner was able to field a number of those. They were able to speak to some degree to the number of employees, hours of operation, that sort of thing. So, I would say those questions were definitely answered. More so, there were just a lot of concerns that were expressed, more so than questions, I would say, as far as the entire public hearing went.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll hear from the petitioner next. Will the petitioner come forward? Please state your name and address for the record on Bill 4225.
Good evening, Brandon Dickinson, representing petitioner, member of the Dentons-Bingham-Greenbaum Firm at 10 West Market Street. at 10 West Market Street, Indianapolis, Indiana.
Mr. Dickinson, do you agree with the area plan report in terms of what was, took place at the Area Plan Commission meeting?
Yes, I would say that the description of the conversation seemed accurate to me.
Some of us have been fielding a lot of questions about the proposed rezoning. Do you feel as if all the questions were answered to the best of your ability or your firm's ability at the public hearing?
Yes, but I also would state that I think some of those questions still remain to be answered. One of the, I think, probably one of the most important questions that has been asked is water usage and the concern with the amount of water the project would use relative to the other project that is in the area. And what we have done is we, and we have Kim Lee Horn here who can speak more specifically on it, we've had conversations with the town as we would need to connect and use town water, what those ranges might be, worst-case, best-case scenarios. We've evaluated those. And the capacity is there even in a worst-case scenario, but we still don't have exactly what our usage will be. And obviously, that's kind of the million-dollar question everyone would like to know. And we're hoping that by furthering the conversation with the town, we can better understand where they would like to see water capacities at and what the project can handle and land at a spot that satisfies everybody's needs.
That, that sounds like a good idea because some of the concerns that were raised to me came from the town elected officials and representatives who had concerns about what was purported at the Area Plan Commission meeting. Do you think it might be more appropriate, rather than process this tonight? Would you think it would require more time to work with the town and others to postpone this until our October 28th meeting?
I think that in the interest of being transparent and being able to give the town more information and have a more thorough conversation, I think more time would be helpful. Area Plan Commission was last week, and obviously, everyone's pretty busy, so we haven't really had time to sit down with the town post-Area Plan Commission meeting and kind of compare notes and come to hopefully some middle ground on a lot of these details and more specific answers on those details, which I think we'll be able to get to with a little bit more time.
Okay, is there a desire among committee members to postpone this till our October 28th meeting? If so, it'd probably require a motion and...
I'll make the motion to postpone until the October 28th meeting.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we postpone this to the October 28th committee meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
I believe the ayes have it.
I'm not on your committee.
No, I know, I'm looking, I think I had one opposed. But I had three, four, one opposed. And if I had to vote, I would vote in favor of postponing it as well. So it would be four to one, but... We'll go ahead and continue this to our October 28th meeting and hope you have the answers to the questions that have been raised, answered, so we can complete this.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with the town in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shetzel, that's all I have for my committee.
I did want to make a comment just before everybody leaves. I've been on the council now for over two and a half years. I don't remember one time that a petitioner has asked for a postponement and we didn't grant it. So just to let you all know, this is usually what we do. I think, as far as I know, 100% of the time I've been on the council, we grant the petitioners that extra time if they ask for it.
Okay. I'll just add in, I know I'm done with my time, but there are members of the town council here. We need to exchange information as to how to get in touch, which you probably know how to, but they're here if you need to. And definitely encourage that dialogue. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to Budget Administration Committee. Chairman Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill Number 60-25. The petitioner's cosponsors are also asking to hold this in committee for another month as we engage with the public and stakeholders on the nuances of the proposed ordinance. I'll make that as a motion to hold in committee for another month.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. All those on the committee in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The, Bill Number 60-25 is held in committee for another month. Thank you.
Okay, Rules Committee. We have nothing to bring forward from the Rules Committee at this time. We have no presentations. Monthly discussion on budget? Is there anyone who wishes to discuss anything on the budget this time? All right, seeing none. Any other business? Oh, sorry, Mr. Katanzeray?
No.
Mr. Murphy, had anything to add about the budget since our last meeting? If there's any additions or changes?
No, I don't think so. I think we're already in a good position. The general fund is balanced and our funds are in pretty good shape, unless you have any other changes to the budget.
No big surprises?
No, no surprises.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any unfinished business at this time? Seeing none. We are adjourned.